Oh my gosh.
It's seven P M. I'm calling the Glendale State Council meeting to order. He'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I'm the United States. And to the public, we just said. Wonderful, wonderful, indivisible, with an ingredient justice.
All right, Jessica, if you'd like to do the roll call.
Baker.
Here.
Coon. Dryden.
Here.
Hedrick. Heinz.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Thompson. Ambulance.
Here.
Finance.
Here.
Police.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
All right, the next action is to approve the minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Clyde makes a motion and seconded by Stacy. All in favor of approving the minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting? Say aye. Okay, and Joanne's abstaining.
Stayed too.
And he's abstaining, then we don't have a. We don't have enough votes to pass the minute, so we'll have to bring that forward at the next meeting. Both Joanne and Doug were gone. All right, so for old business, we'll move on to the street committee. You have the report for that, Joanne.
Committee met, noon by fourteen. In attendance was myself, Rick Coon, Jason Sassy, Mike Brighton, John Center, Mayor Ryan, and Sarah Dynas, who's here from the Koshka Wellness. We opened the meeting at four P M. There were no items on the agenda. Mike did ask during the meeting if there was an update on the Fourth of July parade. At our previous meeting, we had asked for a letter to be sent to the ordinance committee. And at this time, at that time, no letter had been received and Jacey Sassy, but he would follow up with Sarah about that. There was no public comment and we adjourned the meeting at four oh two P M.
Okay, thank you. And I will say I did get a letter from Sarah Plummer, so we'll move that forward at the ordinance committee so we can bring it to the next council. All right, any questions about that? Then we'll move on to the Hooper if you have the report for that, Mr. Darni.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So we started four oh two on that same day with the same people present. The first item was. Dara Dynas was there to represent Makoshka Wellness and she gave a report on a financial report on the city rec programs that Makoshka Wellness basically took supervision of. And this document was the title that we received and looked over. Rec program profit dash loss. So compared revenue to expenses for about five adult programs and one youth program. The document showed Makoshka Wellness sustained a loss in administering, again, these mostly adult recreation activities. No action. The next item was about the curb and sidewalk program. Director CN and Center formed the committee about an upcoming city program to encourage and assist homeowners repairing their property sidewalks and curbs. The city covers the cost upfront while the property owner would pay the cost for the repairs to the city over a five-year period. There will be a limit on the number of repairs that the city will cover per year on a first come, first served basis. So it'd be a rotation where once the numbers allotted for that year are filled, then anybody that would want their sidewalks would have to wait till the next fiscal year. More details will be worked out for this program will be brought to the council for approval. The next item was Glendale Police Department requests for Alatech scheduling software from Time Clock Plus LLC. Chief Mills requested the purchase of Alatech Enterprise subscription for five years to assist in Glendale Police Department scheduling. The service, which is provided by Time Clock, excuse me, Time Clock Plus, comes with a one-time charge of six hundred thirty dollars and an annual cost of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. And the committee recommends the council approval of the purchase. For this year, it's two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And so the committee recommends council approve that. The next item was on the city credit card policy, and it's an update. Director Center provided proposed changes to the City of Glendale's credit card use policy and procedures. And the committee recommends council approval of the proposed changes to the city credit card use policy and procedures. The next item was the Penager Park Grant, and the mayor received notice that the grant funding a study to examine the problem solutions to the root problem slash solutions to the erosion of Penager Park. That funding has been cut. No action. The next item was about a public meeting at Epic. It was last Thursday, five thirty P M. Army Corps of Engineers presented the tentative levy plans. According to the engineer here, he said that we're about thirty days away from the finish of the feasibility study. And so that phase of it is nearly complete. No action. There was no public comment. We adjourned at five twenty-four. Just in finishing here, appreciate the work of the department heads on these programs that they brought forward, so. I don't say that very often, so I want to make sure to notice that. Police Department thanks Chief Mills and Mr. CN with the Public Works and the Sidewalk Program, and then Mr. Center getting the credit card policy update, so appreciate all that. So that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I probably should have had a space here on our agenda, but we do have a letter in the packet from City Court regarding some cost savings, and that is just an F Y I on new business I have approved, but we're just going to discuss it as F Y I. The other item is the Personnel Committee met to interview the candidates for pool manager. And so that is also in your packet. So we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? All right, so hearing none. Let's move on to new business. Could I get a motion to approve the updates to the credit card policy? Okay, Jason, and seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All right, well, I guess that we can move to the vote then. So all in favor of approving the updates to the credit card policy, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. The next item is to approve the curb and sidewalk program. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Joanne, and a second from Clyde. All right, do we have any discussion or is there any information you wanted to provide, Mr. CN?
To eighty thousand first year, first come, first served. Each project will be loaded out initially, so don't worry about the day of making wages or anything like that. And it will be assessed on taxes, span will be five years.
Fine.
So the project will be divided up, the cost of the project will be divided up over five years and assessed each year.
Any questions for Mr. CN?
Yeah, Frank, this will start with the new fiscal year, though.
I don't really see a reason to hold off. I think we can start right now.
Okay.
We get the things in place and the paperwork drawn up. We can go with it right away.
All right, just one last thing. Anything about notifying the public, any plan?
Yeah, that's after approval here. We'll get something rolled out outside to the public and let them know and get it out there. Social media, newspaper. Let people know that it's available and I don't think we have a problem filling it up real quick.
Just one last question here. Followed by another. Yeah. So as a with Jason's example, so when his sidewalk, he comes in and then it's determined what it will cost for his sidewalk. And so there'll be kind of a running total in terms of that eighty thousand dollars. And we'll kind of just go that way. That's what we're doing.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so all in favor of approving the curb and sidewalk program, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next is just an F Y I. The City Court is having some schedule changes. The clerk is going to be mostly working part-time. But according to the letter, there can be times when she could be working up to thirty hours. So we don't really oversee the schedule at City Court, so that is just F Y I. The next item was to discuss the plan with the Army Corps of Engineers two oh five project. So there really is no action with this. Joanne was at the meeting and Mike was at the meeting. And Betsy was there. So I thought I counted about fifty people there and I thought it was pretty positive. We're just at the stage now where we're seeking public comment, so I will ask to have some of this information put either on our website or on our Facebook where you can get the information so that you know where to go to send a letter of support for the project. And as I said at the meeting, if you don't support the project, please come and talk to me so I can change your mind. Because this has been a long time coming and we simply cannot grow or move forward till we address our floodplain issues. And this is the way that it's going to look after we do the levy. So I don't know if this is going to pick up on the camera, but you can see all this is in the floodplain now. And then all this will be now out of the floodplain. And so the way that it's color-coded, and this is something kind of unusual that the Army Corps allowed, but when it's color-coded red, that means that the levy will be built on the landward side. So when it's color-coded blue, the levy will be built on the riverside. So all this blue area here, this aligns with the Casitas Del Rio Trailer Park. Now, the other two plans basically either involved us having to buy this row of trailers or one plan, we had to buy all the trailers. So with the tentative plan, we don't buy any of the trailers. We build the levy toward the river. And so with the yellow, it's another Riverwood build. This is the trailers here. And then red again, we're able to go in on the land side. So we've changed it a little bit up here. That green thing is realigning the levy to kind of avoid the railroad. So I don't know if that's visible, but I've got some smaller ones of these that we might be able to either put on the Facebook or on the website with the information for people to be able to use. So anyway, that's just the update on the Army Corps of Engineers project. Did anybody have any questions about it? Nope. Oh, yep, sorry.
I would just say that when the core gets done with the feasibility study, which according to the engineer would be, you know, thirty days or so. Then the city and the county will be involved in moving ahead with trying to get the next steps. And so I won't go into a lot. I don't know a lot of detail. There's some things that we'll have to discuss, but I mean, there'll be a big role for us in this project. This is just kind of the opening salvo, but a good, a good place for us to take off from. So it'll be up to us and the county and figure out our share of some financing to get to the next stage, which will be designed by engineers. So we can get to that and if you don't get to that, then you don't have any more to look at, so. But anyway, everybody here will be playing a role one way or another than that, so. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, the next item is also an F Y I. We hired Hayden Slade as the pool manager and Addison Stinett as the assistant pool manager. I drove by the pool house today and it looks like the new roof is almost done. We're getting a metal roof on there. We have a woman that's coming from Rocky Mountain College at the end of the month to do training with our lifeguards. So we hope to have that all completed by June second. And we're hoping that we're going to be able to possibly have the pool open on June sixth. Now, I have gotten some calls about swimming lessons. So right now, we don't have anybody certified to as a water safety instructor. The woman that's coming from Billings will just be doing the lifeguard training. If we want water safety instructor training, she would have to come back. So I am in contact with Dickinson, so we will probably send a couple, maybe three people over to Dickinson to get trained as water safety instructors. We will have swimming lessons, but we won't be starting them until probably towards the end of June. So I don't know if this will relieve people's worries, but we have the swim passes. You can get them at City Hall. We're working on getting them online. I don't know if we have them online yet, but that you can purchase them online. We're trying to do some new things with the payment at the pool so that you'll be able to use a credit card and anyway, things are really coming together. We have a good group of kids who are wanting to be lifeguards, and so I think it's going to be a positive thing. I'm really impressed with both women who stepped up to be pool managers, that they're both very capable, and I feel that this will be an excellent swimming season. We have Frank and Kevin Penya, who are going to complete the testing to be certified pool operators. That's another thing that we had to do. The pool is full of water already, so the other thing that we have is a swim meet on June twenty-seventh, so we'll bring that forward at the next meeting, but I just think it's going to be a busy season and we gave two hundred day passes to all the teachers and all the school employees so that they can take their family to the pool for a day. And then I gave pool passes to the summer reading program, so when the kids do their summer reading at the library, they'll get a free pass to go to the pool. So I do think we'll probably have a few more people there just because we're encouraging people to use the pool. We're filling it with water and chemicals and the lifeguards are there, so we might as well have as many people as we can get in the pool. So that's the pool update. And the next thing that I have is Monday is Memorial Day, and that is the day of the ordinance and personnel meeting, so I'm going to ask for a motion to change the date of the ordinance and personnel meeting to May twenty-seventh because of the holiday. So could I get a motion to change the ordinance and personnel meeting to May twenty-seventh?
We'll move now.
Okay, we've got Clyde in a second. And a second from Joanne. Okay. So all in favor of moving the date of the ordinance and personnel meeting to May twenty-seventh, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Then we've got the accounts payable claims of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, seventy dollars and two cents. Could I get a motion to pay the accounts payable claims? Okay, Jason, in a second. Okay, I'm going to say Clyde because we both were standing at the same time. All right, so all in favor of paying the accounts payable claims of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, seventy-seven dollars and two cents, say aye. All right, the next item is accounts payable from the five-six-twenty-five meeting, and that is two thousand, seven hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Could I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay, Mike, in a second. Okay, Doug. All right, all in favor of paying the accounts payable from the five-six-twenty-five meeting of two thousand, seven hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now, next we have the department head comments. I'm just going to ask you to state your name and what department you are and just pause for a second for the owl to recognize you and then to speak loudly. Because we're having difficulty with the owl picking up that end of the room for some reason. And as you can see, I've moved it as far as the cord will go. So we'll start with you, Mr. Center. Okay.
John Center, Director of Operations. Does it recognize me?
No, there we go.
Just to put up data on budget, I have finished doing the preliminary review of everyone's budget that were submitted. I've met with all the department heads. And we've had at least one sit-down with each of them to kind of fine-tune things a little bit. I did get the preliminary personnel budget from I'd Bailey last Thursday. I have some questions and I want to make sure everything's in there properly before I send it out to everybody because I know that I mean, that's the biggest piece of the budget pie. And we're going to be using that for a lot of different purposes in the next periods with negotiations and things like that. So I'm hoping to have that either by the end of this week or early next. And then they will also be working on the revenue projections. So once we have all three of these pieces of the pie together, we're going to start seeing the big picture of how it all comes together. I'm hoping by, if not the first meeting in June, hopefully the second meeting, that we can start showing some big picture stuff. And are we going to be able to go back to funding our reserves, things like that? And start making decisions on what capital items we might want to purchase next year? So it's moving along good. I think we're going to see some good reductions in the budget. A lot of redundancy that was in there, we're cleaning all that up.
Good.
And so it's been good.
All right, any questions for Mr. Center?
Just a question over there. Do you think the Personnel Committee will be the one that you'll be working with and get to talking to employees and their unions about the contracts for next year? Is that going to go through Personnel?
I believe historically that's who's done it.
Okay, well, last time it was. I just, it wasn't that.
Any other questions?
What's that? Depolice. Snowstone.
All right, thank you. All right. Great. Yeah, you might need to come forward too.
Frank CN, Public Works Director. So utility crews have been working on, we've got the pool cleaned up and pumping, everything going there, chemical getting ready. Starting with that, we changed, changed a few things. New way for you to down every little part of the pool, but we've got the right pieces on it now. Got a new roof on the pool and Michelle Britt Lloyd. Been mowing parks, been doing some patching. We saw last week about a water main break. That was, that was a lot of fun. Guys, we got done about three o'clock in the morning on that one. It was a long day. Been biting alleys. We're doing some pool benches around the pool with some trucks stacking, so those will work good this year. We've been getting some meter installs for sprinklers and parks. Had a landfill inspection last week. We should come out of that without even knowing. It should be great. We had broken sprinkler vines and they were cleaning up mud. Been busy. We got the ordinance committee just because of the timing and when we found out about it. It's the same thing they always ask for. Nothing's really changed. They're not asking for the alcohol. We're sure no events, that just turns out to be nothing, so they're not worried about that. But we'll be closing up the streets like they normally do, so that's, that's coming, that's to be you know, expected. I guess you guys are all aware of what they're doing, how they do it. So that means the twenty-seventh, just to make sure we got it all cleaned up, they're ready to go. Got an ordinance, so to get approved hopefully by that first June third date. And then the same thing, there's a, the Enchanted Group wants to do a quilt show. So on June fourteenth, we're gonna close down Merrill. Or not Merrill, uh, Mead. We're gonna close down Mead, that block there, and then they use the parking lot. It's stock and it's a anyway, they'll have a couple food trucks and stuff out there. So that's also going to be in ordinance just because of the timing. So just give me a heads up. I just found out about it Monday and try to keep things going. So Mike.
Did we use contractors with the Lloyd Square?
Yes.
Okay, and that was all, that's all new material then, huh?
Yes.
Great, great. And then just one other thing then. Won't the, with the swim meet, won't the ordinance committee then have to show up that weekend and inspect things to make sure that all the regulations are being followed, the ordinance committee? I think that's kind of, since they're the ones that are dealing with it, they should then follow up. I'm kind of just kidding here, guys.
He's better than me. You have me, Mike.
Yeah. Everybody's got it. Social media will be crucifying, you know, just, we're just trying to get these guys. They're not in panic.
Don't take you serious.
Sorry, Mayor.
Any other questions?
It was the meeting, I shouldn't have.
No? All right, then how about you, Chief Mills?
See her done her graduate. So she's back and working now. And Captain Josh Jonas is here with me today, so when the baby gets all over.
Okay, perfect.
Other than that, business is doing quite busy. We get the floor absolutely ready.
Good deal. Thank you. Did you have any questions, Mr. Darni?
I have none.
All right, did you have anything, Mr. Rubus?
Not neither.
Okay, all right, well then we'll go to you, Mary Jo. Did you have anything? Just keep talking.
I really don't have much other than this is National EMS Week, so if you see any of our crew out and about, please thank them for their service and let them know that they're greatly appreciated.
Thank you. They are appreciated. All right, then we will move on to committee meetings. The ordinance committee will be on May twenty-seventh at four P M. The Personnel Committee will be on May twenty-seventh at four fifteen P M. And I don't have much for the mayor comments, except the new city ordinances are on the city website. So when you click on the city website, on the first page, over on the right, there's a margin with a column that says things like agenda and minutes. Then it says city codes. So if you click on those city codes, then it takes you to the city code page and then on the left-hand side of the margin is where you can click on the chapters of the city code, so. Uh, we do have some adjustments to make with getting the new code numbers on all of our existing paperwork, scheduling the public hearing, but we hope to have everything completed and both readings finished, so the ordinances will be finalized by July first. Um, this has been a huge undertaking and I want to thank the ordinance committee and the city council for their support during this process and um, it was quite a chore to get them done, but it's almost over, so. The other thing I want to mention is the City Government Study Commission meets this Thursday at six at the Carney Center. It's open to the public up to this point. They've not been listing the members of the public who have attended the meeting, so I'm really not sure how much public participation there has been, but they're studying the different forms of government and determining if the Glendike citizens want a different kind of government and then get that on the ballot, so it could be voted on if the citizens determine there is support for change in the form of city government. So there's been still some questions about it, so I'll just say that this government study does not get rid of anyone in the city government. Um, they're looking at the form of government, so. That's all I have. And we can move for adjournment. All right.
Yeah.
So move. And a second, I'm gonna say by Clyde. So all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.